All right, seeing as it is 7 o'clock, I am going to call to order this October 14th, 2020 tri-town meeting. My name is Megan Birch-McMichael. This is a bit of a baptism by fire for me because I, this is my first tri-town meeting. I'm a select board member in Stowe. And because Stowe is hosting this meeting, I am also cheering it. So thank you all for coming. I just wanted to set a couple of ground rules for how the meeting's going to go. Obviously, in this digital world that we are living in right now, virtual digital world, and we've got lots and lots of people watching us. And I do want to note that this meeting is being recorded for Stowe TV. So if for some reason people are not able to see it, it will be on the Stowe TV YouTube channel later. One thing we ask, just like we ask of our students, is to please keep yourself on mute when you are not speaking. And each agenda item is going to have time for public comment. We are going to utilize the chat feature in Zoom for this. So if you want to put your questions in, the only thing we ask is that you put who you're addressing the question to, if there's a particular person, so that we can best direct the question. What else did I want to say? As, as I'm chairing this meeting, and because we don't have a public comment section on the agenda, I will reserve the right to shut down public comment if it is not being productive or if it is abusive. I do feel like in this heightened environment, it's, it's very important to allow for public comment. But I think we can all do it respectfully, given the fact that we are in kind of this heightened time. And with that, I would like to start our discussion. Each, each one of the, actually, I don't want to start the discussion, I want to start the introductions. Like I said, my name is Megan Birch-McMichael. I am a select board member in Stowe, and I am the tri-town representative. If the Bolton and Lancaster reps, because, you know, again, everything's virtual, we haven't all had a chance to meet. So if you want to step in and introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Bob Sikanski, Bolton Selectman.
Dan Wysocki, Bolton Selectman.
Great.
Don Low, Bolton Town.
Okay. Is the Lancaster town administrator here?
No, Jay Moody, Selectman Lancaster.
Okay.
And I'm Denise Dumkosky, the new Stowe town administrator.
Jason Casey, Lancaster Select Board.
Perfect. And I, I know that we also have some members of the school committee here, as well as the superintendent, if you want to just introduce yourselves briefly, as I know that we are going to be discussing some school issues.
Yeah, Brooke Plunche, Superintendent of Schools.
Great.
Hi guys, this is Leah Vigorito. I'm going to stay off camera as I am also trying to take care of my family. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Lincoln Lee from Stowe, I'm the vice chair of the school committee.
Pat Maroney, I'm the business manager from Neshoba Regional School District.
Todd McGuire, Assistant Superintendent.
Give it a try, you're a McCarthy. School committee member.
Great.
Steve Rubenstein, head of the Budget and Warrants Subcommittee of the School Committee.
Great.
I'm Sharon Park, I'm a, a school committee member from Lancaster.
Perfect.
White House School Committee Member from Bolton.
Great. So as we've got more people coming in, I'm just going to ask you to mute yourself if you're not speaking. Thank you. And great, let's just jump right in. The first discussion is going to be sort of just a quick, I, we wanted to talk about sort of how each town is approaching their COVID response. And so I, Ellen is not with us tonight. I think Denise was going to talk on behalf of Stowe, just sort of giving a quick overview of like what we've been doing, what, for, across sort of various committees and boards and all sorts of stuff in town. So I'm going to let Denise take that over.
Yes, thank you. So for Stowe, we are, so our town hall and town buildings are still closed to the public. We are responding to resident inquiries over the phone, online. We do meet folks outside and have meetings outside. And we, if necessary, we do bring them in. Even though we have a lot of separate offices, I feel that the space is kind of tight to have the public freely walking around the buildings. We're still doing a full inventory of our facilities to figure out what changes and upgrades might be necessary to deal with during this COVID era. We've been working on keeping the employees safe, cleaning the facilities as best we can. But as you all know, it's a huge undertaking to try and get everything in line, technology up to date with what we need to, having all of our meetings in a Zoom world. So it's definitely been a challenge. But we are getting through it. We are starting to increase our communication with our residents regarding our COVID response. We have a new section on our website dedicated to COVID. And feel like we could do more public outreach and public relations in that matter. On a quick note, we did decide last night to move forward with trick or treating in Stowe, so we are going to move forward and have trick or treating. We do, we did put precautions in place. And I just issued a formal press release this afternoon, which can be found on our website or on our brand new Facebook page for the Town of Stowe. So you can check in there to see our, all the full details and all of the recommendations that we have made.
Great.
Sorry, I just, sorry, I was muting everybody else and I muted myself. We hope it's one night of normalcy for the kids and allow them to hopefully safely go out there, trick or treat, and have just a fun night. So that's pretty much how we're doing in Stowe.
In the, in the Town of Bolton, we, in early June, opened to the public by appointment only and maintained that until July 6th, when we reopen to the public at our normal hours. We have all sorts of protocols in place. We have our Lexi Book class in place. We have cleaning protocols. We're maintaining our social distancing, but we have been fully open since July 6th. We have quite a few things online that make it easier for the public to be able to access our services without them having to come in. We advertised that heavily as soon as we closed, which I think was March 17th. And that's pretty much where we are right now. The library is still closed, but the other town buildings are open. And we are not encouraging Halloween. The Board of Health met last night and encourage, we have no town-sponsored activities for Halloween, but we, we obviously are encouraging parents that are going to be doing neighborhood activities and so forth to follow CDC guidelines and, and be as, I guess, as, as cautious as they can be, yet allowing the kids to have whatever, you know, good time that they can have. But we do have no, we do not have any town-sponsored events or hours.
And Lancaster?
Yes, we're, we're also appointment only in the town hall. And I, it certainly could go better, but it's the way it's going to go with this disease. The Halloween, we, we're following pretty much the Board of Health rules, regulations, and they're, they're going to do Halloween tomorrow morning. They're doing a meeting and they'll come up with a, with a plan or no plan for Halloween, and we'll just follow through them with that on our meeting on Monday. We have had problems with that. We, we have one healthcare facility in town and it's, it's had a problem earlier. I think it's pretty well straightened out, but we certainly have a lot more cases than Stowe and Bolton, that's for sure. So we're, we're trying to follow through, I guess, that's about it.
Okay, and I see that the, the TA for Lancaster just signed on. Was there anything that you wanted to add for the COVID response?
I didn't know what Jay said, so I don't know what I missed. I apologize.
Okay, we were just talking about trick or treating and buildings being opened or closed and things like that.
Um, yeah, I mean, right now, we've, we've got the building staffed and we are, we have people in by appointment. We are having early voting in the town offices internally. What I've been doing is trying to develop the right plan that keeps the staff happy. I shouldn't say happy as much as comfortable. My goal would be to get, get us back really up and running without any, you know, sort of freely after early voting. You know, voting ends, I think, right after Halloween and really sort of get right back into it.
That's great. So did any of the, I, the way that I'd like to do this is ask if any of the tri-town members had any comment to make about this first. And as we're in that discussion, if there are any public comments that, questions or anything that people have, I would ask you at this time to put them into the chat. Denise is monitoring the chat for this, so that I can run the meeting. And so any questions that need to be addressed, I think we'll put them in at this time. Any of the select board members have anything they wanted to talk about?
And Joey.
Oh, Joey's section? Yeah.
No? Okay, so if there's nothing, and there's nothing in the chat, then we can move on to the next agenda item. And I believe that's Robert, is it Skanski?
Close enough, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So I'll let you, you put this on the agenda, so you can, I will let you start.
Yeah, I was, the, the, let's see, there've been developments between the time I submitted this question and tonight's meeting, but at the time I was looking for when the feasibility study might get off the ground, what are some of the milestones in terms of time for the feasibility study, and when's it ultimately due for completion? Just, and then some, some broad steps along the way.
Sure. So just a couple of broad strokes on this. We are officially now in the eligibility period with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is really exciting for us. We had a kickoff call about a month ago with the, with MSBA representatives and school district leadership. And then since then, there's been something that's kind of been due at the end of every month, that we've had to submit or whatnot, you know, present to them, discuss with them. And so we're just following along the pattern. It's, it is posted on, if you are able to get onto our website, there's an HS Planning, and you can see any memo that's gone out, the statement of interest is there. Anything else that, that you might be interested in should be on that tab. If we've, if we've been public with it, we immediately post it. I think we're in a really good position right now. The, the next role for us now is to finalize our, the school building committee. So we're in the process of working with MSBA on that. We had great parent interest, so I want to thank all of the parents who expressed interest in wanting to sit on the committee. We'll finalize things probably tomorrow morning. I had a great conversation with MSBA this afternoon on some detail-oriented components of it, but I think we're in a really good position to wrap that up shortly. And then by the end of this month, we've got two major documents. One, we've been working on for almost a year, and it's just about all pulled together, so we're doing some fine tuning on that. I would say it, we, we asked for a, an extension for beginning in the eligibility period just because of COVID and everything else that was going on. And they were, they were fabulous about running that extension, but quite frankly, from there, we're exactly on target with everything. So we feel very good about the process right now. For the, with regards to the feasibility study itself, as you know, that will, we, we can't give you a timeline on that because we really have to wait until MSBA votes to approve, to put us through to that next phase. So we're not at the feasibility stage yet, we're just in the eligibility period right now. So that's just a broad stroke overview.
Okay. I know Denise had indicated she had a question.
So Brooke, I'm not sure if you got the email I sent yesterday regarding the school building committee. So I don't know if we can touch upon that here. I do have some concerns that we're not being equally represented as the towns. I did speak to both Dawn and Orlando, and not that I want to volunteer myself or Dawn for more committees, but I do really feel it's important that all three of us are on that committee so that we can have an equal voice for our communities. I came from a regional school district in the middle of a building committee project, and each town had full equal representation on the committee, just so that there was not one with more participation and more information. We all had the same level of input, and I really do feel that's important for the residents of Stowe, that I am at the table and have a seat at that table and a voice.
So noted, and I, yes, I did get your email. I did have a conversation with MSBA about it. Right now, the committee, as it's, as it's pulling together, and like I say, we won't be finalizing it until tomorrow, and just as an FYI, and I'm sure Denise, you know this, it has to be voted on by the school committee. So this, this topic will be coming up for them at the next, their next meeting next Wednesday. Right now, as we've got it pulled together, you can be, rest assured that we made sure that there was equal representation from each community on that. On the committee, we also took a look back, and our committees in the past have had either one committee, when we've worked with MSBA before, one committee had nine individuals on it, and one had 13. And so that was the number that we were looking at, and I think right now we're probably sitting around 14. And we also took a look to make sure that, and again, you would know this Denise, with your experience, that the, the matrix is such that the MSBA ships out to you is pretty specific, right? I mean, for example, it was looking for somebody specifically from a FinCom. So we have that person now. It was looking for someone specific from your facilities department, so we've done that. So it was very specific, as you know, as to who should be sitting on there, and we did that. We also took a look too, because in conversations, several conversations with MSBA, they were stating the, the critical importance of having people on there that have engineering, architectural, and construction experience. And so I'm so grateful to the number of parents who reached out and said, I've got this type of experience, I think I'd be a great asset. And so we certainly didn't lack for parent participation and being able to fill that out. So that was another component that we looked at. We looked at leadership, we looked at educators to be on there, we looked for finance folks to be on there, engineer, architect, and construction, and we managed to pull all of that together. So, I mean, not only did we look at the town representation, but we also looked at the buckets, if you will, of the type of skill sets that MSBA was looking for as well.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll just say, and I appreciate that, I will just say that the way the MSBA matrix is in the Pennsyltucket district, we took that and applied that full matrix to each town. So each town had a selectman, the TA, and a finance member, plus the residents. So, I mean, it was a very large committee, but that was the fairest way that all towns could be equally represented. I would encourage the school committee members that are here to take that into consideration and consider having all three TAs as part of this committee. As I said, the level of communication would be different if a resident is serving on that board versus the TA that can report back to the selectman and can report back to their constituents at meetings. I just feel it's vitally important that we have a full say in that process, so.
So noted.
Thank you.
We hear you.
Thank you.
Denise, can I add something, please?
Of course.
Just to support what, what you said, I think equal representation on a project like this is vitally important. And I think, I know that Orlando has already said that he's interested in participating, which I think is great. And you and I both bring some pretty significant experience from having served on past building committee projects, both for regional school districts as well. So I think there's an opportunity to take advantage of some expertise here, and I, I totally agree that equal representation is very important.
As do I. For the three communities, I would agree with you.
Megan, do you mind if I ask a quick question? Am I out of order?
I do not, Leah, not at all.
So I appreciate the concept of equal representation, and I agree. I wonder, could, Denise, could you maybe speak to the agility of the committee? And as it got bigger, was that a detriment to its effectiveness? Or do you think that it can still operate and function properly at a larger size? And maybe you could just tell us what the number was in the Pennsyltucket system?
Certainly. So to be honest with you, I thought it was going to be a bit out of control. I believe we were at 17 members, because there were nine just from the three communities. And then we had a school committee member from each community. We had a number of school officials, but only two were voting members because we had the certain seats to fill. We had facilities with the school facilities. So it actually was helpful because there were times that, especially during the winter months and when you meet so regularly, having a larger number, you could have, you know, half the group be there and still have a very productive conversation because you had nine or 10 people to have a discussion. There were times that we broke into subcommittees, and again, it made that process easier because there were more to choose from. But quite frankly, through the entire process, almost every meeting, people were there because it's, obviously, a lot of money we're talking about. It represents a lot of people, a lot of taxpayers, and again, I felt like I was the conduit to my residents, so I was there. But I found it to be very helpful to have a wide variety of expertise sitting around that table.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to add that ultimately, all of this work is for nothing unless the towns accept the overall project. And so it's very important to have multiple avenues of communication into each of the different communities. So I would support an expansion of the group to include the town administrators, the FinComs, and, and a school, a school committee member from each town also.
Okay. Do we have any, Denise, do we have anybody in the chat that had a question about this section?
No.
Okay. If it's okay with everyone, then I'm going to move on to the third agenda item, which is a discussion about the return to school fall 2020, remote learning at Neshoba Regional High School versus hybrid for remainder of Neshoba Regional School District. And Stan, I believe that you wanted to speak to this?
Yes, thank you very much. This is Dan Wysocki, Selectman in Bolton. I've been approached by quite a number of residents in the Town of Bolton, as well as in Stowe. And I believe there's a, there's a bit of concern among the parents. I mean, right now, all of the schools in three districts, with the exception of the high school, have a hybrid option. And I guess the central theme among all of the parents, and I met with quite a number of them face to face a couple of weeks ago, is that there really isn't, or has not been any definitive explanation as to why the high school can't support some type of hybrid curriculum education, why it's only remote. I've read some of the things, and basically, to paraphrase and not to show no disrespect, but basically, well, you know, the high school is, is old, it's, the high vac is this, the windows don't open, and therefore, we can't have a hybrid solution. And the parents have been asking for quite some time to get some, a bit more detailed explanation as to why there isn't such a, a hybrid solution, and especially now. I mean, if we don't have a hybrid solution now, we're certainly not going to have one in the middle of December, or in January, or February, just because of the weather and the climate and everything else. And I suspect that also, things will probably get worse before they get better with COVID-19. And I think the parents are looking for a bit more of an explanation as to why there isn't such a solution, and when potentially there will be such a solution where there might be a hybrid option to allow the, the students to have the ability to come into class. You know, I, I know that I've been reading some things where some of the credits of the courses have been reduced because there's no in, in-school labs, and that certainly affects the, the students themselves. I've heard, heard from some parents that, you know, not having the necessary collaboration is potentially detrimental. So I think it's, from a high level, it's a lack of information, and the parents are asking for more information. I also would like to understand better, my understanding is, is that most of these school districts have been floating around the, the term, remote learning academy. And I had, I had quizzed Don Low, because some number of weeks ago, I drove by the high school, and the parking lot was full, including where the students would be parking. It's just packed, packed full. And I heard to some extent that, that we have hired additional teachers to teach the remote portion of the, of the schooling for a lot of the, the kids that are not in, obviously not in high school, but obviously who are participating in, in, in remote learning. And that potentially, you know, that increase in the number of teachers being housed at the high school is one reason why we don't have a hybrid solution. So I think as, as a start, there's a lot of concern amongst the parents as to not getting a sufficient explanation. I know we've had sort of dueling banjos of one architect versus another saying, you know, it can't be done, and another one who, who quite frankly, you know, wrote a fairly good lengthy email, asking why certain standards, you know, either can't be met, or, or what's the, what's the position of the school relative to the high school. So I think from, from that perspective, I think, you know, I think we need to start a little bit more of a dialogue, because, and it also dovetails a little bit later conversation in terms of communication. I think the communication from the district and the high school, and the, and the, the school, the school committee has been lacking. And also, I, I also had, had seen where there was a public records request done from one of the parents of, of students in the high school. And that request was responded by the district's legal counsel, which I found highly unusual. The questions that were being asked were not of any extraordinary nature, but I find it very unusual that the, the public record request was responded by legal counsel as opposed to the district. So perhaps we can have a bit of a conversation, at least to start. And I don't think this is going to be the be-all, end-all of the conversation. I think this is going to take some time. You know, parents are asking, what, what's the plan? Why, why wasn't there a hybrid solution, other than the school's old, you can't open the windows, and the high vac isn't good? And I guess some parents are asking that there was some grant money to, to fix that situation, and where that grant money has gone. So, you know, I'll turn it over to the district and the school committee for some comment.
Okay, so Stan, there is a lot to unpack in that. And so I think maybe let's, let's address the first point, which is what is the plan for hybrid, or why hybrid? And Kathy has actually sent me some slides. We can put those up. I'm going to ask Kathy to narrate what the school committee had actually done as far as why they made the decision they did. And so I would like, Denise is going to do a screen share, I believe. Kathy can narrate, I'm going to go on mute and then.
So Kathy, can you let me know which document you'd like me to put up first? So Kathy, can you let me know which document you'd like me to put up first? Kathy, can you unmute yourself, please?
Unmute? How's that?
Perfect.
Great, thanks so much. If you could put up the slide deck dated, um, eight, ten, twenty, twenty, that would be great. But I want to start by thanking, um, you all for having us here to talk about, um, how the school year is going and what, how our plans came to be what they are. And, um, also for your interest in the work that we do as, um, a school committee. We also want to acknowledge that, um, we are an eleven-member committee and nine of our members are here, um, this evening. So thanks to all of you. Um, we've become quite adept at these extra meetings. Um, um, so this will be our third meeting in maybe four weeks. So anyway, um, so, um, this was, I just want to tee up how we got to where we are, um, without getting into the weeds about the DESE and their expectations for, um, the, um, reopening of school plans. Um, on, um, there was options that, that the, the schools were allowed to have relative to choices, a hybrid, remote, um, and, um, a full return. So when we had to submit a preliminary plan around, I think it was around July twenty-second, um, we did that to, um, in, in response to the work of the, um, school task force. We had a district task force made up of, um, administrators, parents, teachers. Elaine Sanfilippo represented the school committee on that task force. And then every, um, school had their own task force and each one had a member of the school committee on it. I served on the high school task force. And so on, um, the, the twenty-second of July, um, we met to, uh, hear what the preliminary plan would be. And at that point, the plan was for hybrid and to give, um, um, families an opportunity to do remote. And I'm going to focus on the high school now, but I know that standard reasonable questions about the remote learning academy, um, K-8, and I can speak to that a little later on. Um, but I want to add that, that others on the committee, Brooke, um, Steve Conane, the high school principal is here, so they may be, be jumping in if, if that's okay. So, um, uh, early on, we had a, um, a, uh, we had, well, in, in, in March, if somebody used the analogy, if somebody pulled the fire alarm and we all had to run out of the building and leave all our stuff there. And that's really what we faced in March. And so there was a remote learning plan then, uh, but I think there would be, uh, general agreement that it wasn't optimal. And so looking at a remote model moving forward, there would have to be a lot more, um, attention to the prepared curriculum. And I'm not going to read all the slides to you, but I think suffice it to say, we would need more planning, more thoughtful planning in the areas of teaching and learning and assessment. And so there were a lot of, um, things to consider. Um, let me see. Okay. Denise, if you could go to the next slide, please? So obviously, we're concerned about the health and safety. And we were presented at the high school now with challenges with regard to the hybrid model. So, um, there are the regulations around, um, obviously masking and, uh, social distancing. And, um, the high school, the, the K-8s are, are hybrid. Um, but if you can remember back to high school, I think that's easier for most of us to remember than maybe the K-8s. But the biggest difference between high school and a K-8 is that the kids have a lot more choices in terms of classes. At the lower grades, kids travel together in a group. You have, um, at the elementary level, one teacher, maybe you go out for special for P.E., art, music, but pretty much you're with that same group of kids all day. Very similar at the middle school. At the high school, however, um, as you can see from this illustration, each student is in a class with about ten to fifteen different students, and then they attend seven different classes over two days. So it just increases the amount of contact you have, um, with other people. Also at, at our high school, and in any high school, um, there is, there is movement between classes, um, obviously to get to a class. So in terms of contact, there are a lot more challenges with, um, a hybrid model than with that. Um, and these slides, by the way, they can, they're on our website, um, with our meeting materials. So anybody that wants to go back and look at them, this particular slide deck is from, um, the eighth, when, uh, we had to come forward with a, a comprehensive plan. So, um, the next slide, please, Denise? So in terms of the, the model, um, I know that people are saying that they, they didn't get information about the hybrid model. But again, um, this was presented at our meeting for our consideration on August, um, I think the tenth. So if you can see, I think if, if you can get the whole screen and they might have to, you know, screw some people up. Um, you can see with a hybrid schedule that, oh, you have two cohorts, cohort A, and, and the cohorts are divided the same way they are at the lower levels. You have a cohort A that essentially is in school Monday and Tuesday, and then cohort B that is in person in school Thursday and Friday. And then when this was developed, it was somewhat nebulous what the asynchronous day would be, but that's pretty standard across the district. That Wednesday is an asynchronous day. And at this point, and when it was presented to us, it was also a half-day for teacher professional development and, uh, collaboration. But what this shows, um, is that in this model, the students would see a subject area teacher once a week. So if you're, um, if your A class is math, you see that, um, you're in cohort A, on, on Mondays, you would see your math teacher, and then you wouldn't see that math teacher again until the following Monday. Now granted, the, the periods are, are, um, almost, um, an hour and a half, but the contact with the teachers, um, in this model is, is minimal. Um, and so, uh, again, presenting the challenges that are listed here. And, um, again, I'm not going to read out every slide for you guys, but I think the, the actual schedule itself illustrates, um, what the students' day would, would be like and the contact they would have, um, with their teacher. And they would be in school in person, um, two days a week. So Denise, the next slide, please? So, and again, let me just speak to this a little bit. I was on the high school task force when we started looking at this concept of remote, and that was what the original intention was. But then as this, the, the group of, um, folks on that committee, and this also included students, started looking at other possibilities because of the, um, challenges, um, that, that we would encounter with that hybrid model. So this was a draft of the, um, the, the remote model. Now, if you're familiar at all with, with school schedules, especially high school schedules, this looks like a, a regular high school schedule. Um, you have the, the classes that meet every day because of, and they, they meet for about fifty minutes. Wednesday, again, is still that day set aside for, uh, cleaning of the buildings, between cohorts and other buildings. But, um, as you'll see in the next slide deck, this, the Wednesday at the high school has been, oh, could you back up? I'm sorry, Denise. Thanks, I'm sorry. Um, um, I'm sorry. So anyway, um, but the point is the kids have that contact with their teacher, um, every day through, uh, this remote model. Uh, the other thing to bring up from the, um, um, the, the hybrid presentation is that in the hybrid model, you would have to, um, provide, um, a remote option for those families that choose this. And so were we to, to do that, it would have required, um, us to, uh, contract out that programming for the students because we wouldn't have the staff to do both the, the hybrid teaching and the remote model. And, and many school districts, uh, that are doing hybrid have to do that. And there was a, a preference expressed by our parents that they really want our students taught our curriculum by our teachers. So that was another, uh, consideration in adopting the, uh, the remote option. So, um, if you go to the next slide. So the other part of school, as everybody knows, is, uh, the school community and the relationships between students and teachers and families. Um, so you can see the different challenges expressed here for the, for the hybrid model, and then some opportunities within the remote. Now again, this was early on in August. It was just the, the preliminary plan. And as you will see in the next deck, um, the, the more fully developed plan. So Denise, we could go to that next plan if you'd like. The, the, I think the, yeah, it's dated nine twenty-three. Great, thank you. So this was presented at our September twenty-third meeting by the high school, um, leadership team, and it shows how we got to the, the point of getting to the, the remote model. So you can go to the next slide. And again, the vision for remote learning, and it was, this is our, 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 our vision for, for our, our education of our students in general, that you want to make sure that the, you're considering the importance of community and relationships, quality of instruction, and health and safety. So the next slide shows the schedule that we are operating on at this time. So you can see that Wednesday now has, um, is, is another opportunity for, um, teachers to connect, um, with students, but it really looks like, uh, more of a typical high school schedule. So, um, if you go to the next slide, it shows that in addition to having these, the remote schedule, what the high school has been working on since adoption of this model, and, and I can let Steve speak to that more fully, is looking for in-person opportunities. The first, um, opportunity took place with the freshman orientation. And so they created a model there to have kids in to interact with each other and their teachers. Um, they also had a system for, um, picking up materials. And for certain, uh, subjects, uh, the one that always comes to mind is science, that kids need to pick up certain materials on a regular basis, and so they do that on the first Wednesday of the month. A program that was coming online, um, be, before this even happened, was this idea of our student support center. And this is, um, uh, for, for non-special education students who need any number of types of support, academic, um, guidance support. And so that is something that is being implemented during this remote model. And then, um, future in-person opportunities, which, um, Steve might want to speak to. And then, uh, perhaps, um, obviously, we were able to get, um, athletics online at the high school, working for Tanya Rich, working with the MIAA, and so we have a, a schedule about that. Steve, do you want to say something about the, um, the, what's going on in terms of future in-person opportunities?
Right now, we're, we're working, we're working on, on bringing in a meet, greet, and, and share type of, uh, situation. We're bringing each class in on a Wednesday. They'll come in sixty-five students at a time. Uh, we've got some, um, interactive type things they're going to do outside, then they're going to come in, they're going to meet. We've got, we've got a whole new admin team, so we want them to meet them, want them to have some time to interact with one another. Um, today is only day twenty of, of school, so, so we're, we're working towards getting more and more students in. If I could just jump back one second, Kathy, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm jumping around a little bit, but...
No, it's okay.
Our, our hybrid plan, that, that came out, we, we put that out in August, and we were, we were copying some other schools that were doing things that were, that were similar to what we were looking for. Um, but we've been in contact with every school in the MidWatch League that are in hybrid, looking at their schedules, and, and we actually have another hybrid schedule similar to the things that they're looking at. But, but the thing I kind of want to stress is that it's, it's a, hybrid or remote is, is a, is a situation where if, if we're in remote, we're actually giving a great deal of instruction to the students. All of the principals that I've talked to in the hybrid model, they're getting a lot of heat from parents and, and their constituencies because they're not getting enough instruction because the, the teachers are only seeing them a day and a half a, a week. Um, and that's really my, my biggest issue. Um, we're, we're, we're giving the kids very close to what they would have in a regular school sys, school situation where they're, they're getting their classes almost every single day, um, and, and they're, they're working through that. So I just want to, I want to be clear that we, we have been talking to other schools and, and trying to incorporate what they're looking at. We could go to a hybrid situation in, in three weeks if we needed to, um, but, but the fact of the matter is we had to make the decision whether we want it. The, the hybrid model is more to, to give the kids their social time, which is great, and I, and I'm sure that's, that's very important to a lot of people, but it's also going to have an impact on their instructional time. So, so I, there's, there's good points and bad points of both. And, and in my opinion, I think the, the remote is, is the better situation because we are given enough instructional time, and we're working towards trying to get kids into the building as much as we possibly can. So that, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks. And I, I wanted to mention also that it was based on the recommendations of the high school and looking at the instructional advantages of the, um, remote model over the hybrid model, and, um, also the opportunities that the high school, um, faculty and staff are working on for in-person opportunities that, um, led to the school committee, uh, adopt, adopting this model for the high school. And, um, in the other, some of the things, like I was, I, I've seen some comments about poor air quality at the high school, um, comments about the decrepanness of the building and, um, you know, the high school for building that age is in, in pretty good shape. Do we need a new building or a building project? Yes, absolutely we do. However, I was quite surprised at what came out of the, um, evaluation of our HVAC systems and that while we cannot operate with the, the MRF thirteen filters because of the, uh, the design and the age of our, our systems, that we meet or exceed, uh, the, the, the standards for healthy air in the buildings according to the, um, mechanical engineer who, um, whose company did the study and just from building our understanding about things like CFMs and air exchange rates and, um, any number of things. And I know that, um, Steve, um, no, Rob Frieswick, um, the facilities director, has met with the school committee, um, several times. And, um, um, so I, I think that, um, the, the biggest thing, I think, is the ability to do the social distancing, and that's one of the factors, the social distancing at the high school. And we have put out a lot of information about, about what that would entail. And I, I do want to touch on the, the idea of, of communication because there have been, um, public forums that have been held by the task forces, um, by schools. I think the district had one. I know that the principals, um, K-12, have spent a lot of time, um, surveying and answering parents' concerns, and, um, the school committee has been very diligent, I think, in responding, um, to emails. And, you know, we hear from a lot of people who are, um, happy with, with the plan at the high school, um, as well as those who are not. But we've had this, um, system that we started in, um, August, where we have invited people to send us their questions. If you had, uh, looked back at our meetings in August, the August sixth and August tenth, you will see that we actually spent time in the meeting, um, articulating the questions that were presented to us and responding to them. Um, and so, and there have been numerous communications coming out from the buildings, um, to, um, their, their parents. The high school has sent out surveys. Um, so, um, I think that I'm kind of at a loss to understand where the gaps in communication are. And our next, um, push out of information based on, uh, concerns that we are, that we have received will be at our next meeting on, um, uh, next week. It's October twenty-first. And again, um, listing the questions that we have received. And again, listing the questions that we have received and providing answers. But this time, what we're going to do is create a pamphlet to put the supporting documents and connect them to the, the presentation because we have looked at so much information and put out so many presentations, and the documents are associated with meeting materials or they're under facilities. So we want to make that a little easier for, for folks to be able to access. So that's our goal for next week. I just want to say, there was something about next steps. So we're a month into school. It would have been wonderful, it would have been optimal to sit down and come forward in, in August when we put forward the comprehensive plan to say, okay, so this is our trajectory. This is where we're going. These are our next steps. But again, I don't know any district that has done that or has done it with any kind of fidelity where you can be certain that that's going to be your next step. Nonetheless, we're in a position to reconvene our task forces and ask the question, what does phase two look like? What should it look like? What, what information we need to have, what resources, et cetera. But even as we speak, and I think somebody brought it up earlier, you can see COVID cases going up in Massachusetts. On several news outlets today, they were talking about the problems that were rising because of sports and hockey tournaments. And I heard a student today talking about how he and his family were in Maryland over the weekend at some baseball clinic, and how you, you don't, you can't control where people know what they do. So, but that being said, we reconvene the task force and look ahead and provide the information and plans as we can. Those are committees that we have in place, and I think we're at a point now where we can look, look ahead and see, but nothing is certain. We can't guarantee anything. I can't. If somebody can, then please tell us what you can guarantee. But this has been a tremendous lot of work and planning and unprecedented. I hear that all the time, but that's, that's the truth of this. And I think, let me see. So Stan, you wanted to know about remote learning academies, K-8. You want to know about the additional teachers we've hired to teach the remote learning academy?
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm in it, I'm just going to step in for one second, if that's okay.
Of course.
I think Brooke wanted to speak to a couple of things. We do have some parent questions. I did promise that there was going to be some public comment as well. And I have some questions that you're sort of, you're touching on some things, and we're touching on some other agenda items, and so I just want to make sure that we sort of are getting everyone answered.
Absolutely. I was just going to say that it was, it can answer about the remote learning academies.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
But it's, you know, whatever, whatever you please, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. And I do, I do want to say I do appreciate all of the work the school committee has been doing. This is, I know they worked all during the summer. I, again, this is not, this is an unenviable position for parents, for teachers, for students, for administrators, and so I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Madam Chair, may I go? May I speak? Okay, thank you. I'm just going to respond to a couple of quick things here because I think that there's some quick answers. So first of all, with regards to the remote learning academy teachers, so when we first had to devise our plans for the end of July, and I know that Dr. McGuire's on too, so Dr. McGuire, if I say something or I miss something, I hope that you'll, you'll step in here. We in essence had to produce plans that were full return, hybrid, and full remote. So we had to create those three plans for our school district. And with that as well, had to be a parallel, like a fourth plan, if you will, that ran parallel to whatever it was that we chose to do for those full remote students who would never come back into, into the buildings, for example. So it was really, really a total of four plans, a full return, a hybrid, a full remote, and then this other remote plan that would run parallel. So in terms of manning, because that was really your question, Stan, and in terms of manning it, we were really, I think, really fortunate because when we, when we sent out, I know we sent out a number of surveys and a number of questionnaires to our parents, but at one point in time, we knew that we had to get serious and say, okay, who was not coming back to school? So that we knew who would be remote permanently, like for the year or for the semester or whatever. And so the parents were, were great, and we got tremendous response on that. So at the end, when we closed that window, we basically had a really solid plan of how many kids were going to be remote. And right now, it's about 30% of our student population across the district. And so, you know, we looked at it as administrative team and said, okay, what do you think the chances are here that we might be able to naturally? For example, let's say it's Florence Sawyer, and don't hold me to the numbers, but just, it's just for the general picture. Let's say that they've got five classes of grade two students, and that's how many were logged for this, this current school year. Do you think that we might have enough students fall off and that we could pull a teacher out of that grouping of five to have four in, in class or for return for the hybrid and one remote? And that's pretty much what happened in terms of the elementary. And exactly as Kathy said, one of the things that the DESE knows, remember that we're, we're looking at the CDC guidelines, the DESE guidelines, and then our nurse leader is heavily involved with all of the Nishoba Boards of Health and Mass Department of Public Health. So all of that has to kind of come together here. So what we found at the elementary and the, another difference, and Kathy had touched on this, but I want to also speak to this, is we were able to, and the commissioner had asked us to, but it was common sense, try to keep your students so that they're not moving and try to only move your teachers. So you don't have movement in the halls, that kind of thing. They came out, for example, with a number and said, you know, your hallways, if there's, they're this many feet, this is how students can pass. If they're this many feet, this is how students can pass. And that was a little bit problematic for us at the high school because our hallways aren't, because of the way the lockers configured and everything else, didn't always work for us. That wasn't a key factor, it's just, it was just problematic. So the elementary teachers and students, once we got everybody all logged in, we were able to pull just about right across the district except for one or two small tweaks, grade one teacher, grade two teacher, grade three teacher, four or five, from each elementary school. And that became that, that remote learning academy for those remote kids. So that was the parallel to the hybrid. We, I think we had to hire one teacher, if memory serves me right, Dr. McGuire, let me know if, if that's the case. I think it was just the one teacher. That was at the elementary level. Then at the middle school level, that's not how it played out. So we ended up having to hire, this was to your question, hire remote learning academy teachers because the numbers didn't work so smoothly as they did at the elementary level. So at the middle school level, you're absolutely right. We had to hire a middle school, two middle, no, three middle school teachers, and two middle school teachers came from other schools in our district that we were able to pull together. And then we looked and said, well, rather than leaving these teachers kind of all over the district, would it not make better sense for that remote learning academy at the middle school level to have everybody together? So that's when we looked at the high school and said, well, that's the only building that we had real estate to be able to get all of these, the middle school teachers into one place. We also thought it would be very good because we thought that it would be good connectivity between that remote learning middle school teacher group and all of the remote learning high school teachers so that there was not a nice dovetail there for that. So did they take up all kinds of space? No, but I mean, is, I mean, in essence, every room in that high school is, has got a function right now. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Yes, to some extent it does, which, which says that part of your plan automatically somewhat excludes the high school for a hybrid solution. And going back to the presentation that Kathy did, it was totally disconnected from, from comments that we've been hearing that, you know, the HVAC and the, the windows and everything else. I mean, that, that presentation had nothing to do with what we've been hearing about the condition of the school. So which is it? You know, that, it's, 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 I'm hearing one thing tonight, I'm hearing another thing before. And I think overall, you know, you have a situation here where you have a lot of parents that are concerned, and I'm hearing anecdotally that, that parents are pulling their kids out of the district to find other avenues of education. And I'm also hearing anecdotally that the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids and their parents are looking at options because they've lost faith in the district and the school committee. And, and as a selectman in the town of Bolton, that has a direct impact on the viability of this town because for years, everybody has said, you know, Bolton's a great place because it's a great school system. And now we have this. We had the whole Veraca incident earlier this year. And, and now, you know, we have a potential for the loss of increases in folks coming to the town. We have a potential loss in valuation. So when people decide they want to move out of this town, their homes are going to be worth less, and that's a very tangible thing which we have to look at. So, so the actions that are going on now have a very tangible effect on every resident in every one of these towns. So you need to be, you need to be concerned about this, and that's why we're bringing this up. And, you know, I've heard a lot of things about why we couldn't do, but what I think a lot of parents want to hear is, what's the plan moving forward? What are we going to do to try to mitigate this stuff? And, and what, what are the answers? Obviously, you know, COVID-19 is an unknown. It's probably going to get worse before it gets better, but we have to have some plan at some point in time where we address these issues. And I'm not seeing it, I'm not hearing it, and the parents are also telling me they're not hearing it either. So, you know, I think, you know, we need, we need to start that dialogue.
So I'm going to go back to the HVAC system for half a minute because Kathy did allude to that too. And for the most part, she said that, and this goes back to another point that you made just a minute ago, we're not as concerned about the HVAC system. We're going to have to do some tweaking in Lancaster and at the Emerson Building as we move into the winter months, and we'll touch base with our town administrators when we have more information on that because we can see that that's coming. The high school, you have to keep it in mind too, like when we go to a hybrid model, we won't necessarily, you know, you're probably going to be looking, if you take, let's say 30% of the high school population out of the mix, and then you go to hybrid, you're looking at half of that, right? Because you're breaking it in two. And so it's not a question of do we have the space. We'll have the space to do hybrids, so I'm certainly not concerned about space for hybrid. But I would also suggest that our classrooms, which is typical in probably most buildings, but not so much in the newer buildings, we won't be able to do a six-foot distance though at the high school for social distancing. When we first measured, because, and I want to go back, when we first started the planning this year, this summer, we started for a full return. That was our hope. When we started this last, like, May and June, we were hoping to go full return. And then we started getting guidance, and we realized that we couldn't do that. So that's when we switched gears and we started to map out a hybrid plan. So I, you know, we've got, we've got more than one hybrid plan in our back pocket. I think we are waiting to see though what is going to happen with our trajectory with the numbers as they're coming out right now. And I will tell you that I know that, you know, a number, I've been talking to a number of superintendents in the last four or five days that have real concerns about the upcoming season. Now, you, you didn't say, speak to that, but I will, and the amount of travel. And so there are, I got another phone call last night from a superintendent saying that he was thinking about going to full remote district-wide from about Thanksgiving till the end of January. So when we had first talked about the remote as a, as a plan for us to consider at the high school, one of the strengths that we saw was that we wouldn't have to go between hybrid, remote, hybrid, remote, depending on whatever was happening, like, for example, like Lincoln Sudbury that you've seen or Dover Sherborn. So we knew that remote was probably going to be the most stable of the three options that we had, which is another reason why we followed down the remote. In terms of, somebody else had brought this up, and I saw this in the chat, in terms of connecting with other people, and you heard Steve Cullinan, who's our acting principal there right now, mentioned that he is in constant contact with MidWatch and beyond. So we, we have a strong pulse of what's going on in other schools and in other school districts. So I would want you to know that we're looking at other hybrid models, looking to see if there's some things that we can do better with, with the model that we've already created. So that is happening. If I, I think if any of us knew that the COVID vaccine was coming or whatever, we could say, yeah, come, come November 1st, we'll do full return. No, we all want full return, every one of us. This, this is not pleasant for us to work through either, but we've done the very best that we feel that we can. I think, Steve, I know you're still on here. I know that one of the things that you had thought about was, was your next survey was reaching out to parents and asking them for their thoughts on this. Do you want to speak to that?
Totally. We're, we're right now breaking down the numbers from our last survey, and I'll be honest with you, the, the numbers were many, more than 50% of the people in favor was happening remotely. There were concerns however about hybrid, and I'm concerned about hybrid. If people think that they're better off in hybrid than, than in remote, we'll go to hybrid. We can, we can put that into place. So we're going to, in a, in a, in probably two or three weeks, we're going to put out a survey to the parents, asking them hybrid or remote, and we'll give them, we'll give them the basis of both sides, and we'll, we'll see, see how that goes. And if, if most of the people want us to go to hybrid, we, we can certainly make hybrid work. It's just going to take some time to put it into, into place. I, I don't agree with that, but that, that's, that's not a here or there. I think, I think I'd like to see what the parents think as well. So we'll be doing that in the next two or three weeks.
Stephen Brooke, I think one, one thing that is coming up in the chat that I'm seeing as well, and I, I hope that you could speak to, is I think parents are looking at what are the benchmarks that need to be hit in order to get to hybrid or, well.
Well, I think, I don't even know, that's a piece of it, but I also think, for example, we have, it pretty much tees off of what Steve Cullinan just said. I think we would have to have acceptance that the three to six foot mark is socially acceptable by our parents. And that was one of the other things. We received a lot of emails during that initial time period and comments into our task forces. And Kathy had mentioned the task force. We had a district-wide task force, we had a task force at every building. The task force at the high school, I think, was over 30, I think, over 30 people on that task force. And then we had task forces within the, within the district as well. And one of the things that we heard a lot of was we only want the six-foot mark. We don't want to go less than six feet. And that played a part in our decision as well, in, you know, the fact that we put that forward. So I, I think that, you know, there are some things that I think Steve said this very eloquently earlier, there are going to be some things that we're going to have to give up if we want to go to the hybrid model. I saw in the chat some questions about HAPF filters and such. Absolutely, we've been looking into those and seeing if that's an option for us because especially for those of you that know the high school, those rooms without windows, right? And we also have some rooms that will not be able to be online because of the HVAC. And it's not that it's bad, it's just that it's not the type of air exchange that's needed to keep us all safe. It's not that there isn't any air exchange, it's just not at the level it needs to be.
Can I just jump in one second, Brooke? I, I keep getting comparisons to us and other schools in the area. I just, I want people to understand that Nishoba is probably the second oldest, oldest building in, in, in central Mass. I think the only older building than us is Leamester. Lunenburg has a new high school, Hudson has a new high school, Westboro has a new high school. All these different schools have new high schools, and they All these different schools have new high schools, and they 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 built those high schools based on more modern criteria. So so our our rooms aren't as big as some of these other schools as well, which would, and that makes that that makes things more difficult for us. And I I just want people to understand that. Look around, most of the schools around us are all brand new. We're hoping to get a new building shortly, but that's why we need a new building, because it is, that is the case.
This is Bob Sikanski, and I I just want to bring out a point that we've been discussing this for an hour. I've I've been a selectman for three years. I get very few emails about issues at the school, in the school district. But I've gotten two dozen since last Monday. Some of them are, just want remote, some of them want to go back to school. Most of them just express frustration at not understanding what's going on or what the school district is doing. We've been discussing this, I've been listening for an hour now, and I have no concise idea of what's going on, what's being done. I've seen the presentation from last August, but there's there's six to to 10 weeks of experience the parents have had now, and they've got a new set of questions. Your biggest problem isn't the air conditioning, your biggest problem is the mounting frustration that the school, the school committee in particular, has to figure out how to address. There's, there's, there's just this, there's a, there's a, it's like the dam is going to burst. And and you got to start letting the steam out of the the steam kettle before it blows up.
Exactly.
Megan, may I say something?
Absolutely, Steve, yep.
Okay, thank you. First of all, we haven't been back at school quite a month yet. We went back on the 16th of September, and it's now the what, the 14th of of October? So we've been back to school for approximately four weeks. We would love to have, and I'm a member of the school committee from Stowe, we would love to have full in-person learning. But there are certain prescriptions and certain caveats that we really are doing to keep your kids, the kids of this district, safe. We don't want a kid to go home because he got COVID from another kid, and even if he's not showing symptoms, to bring it home to mom, dad, grandpa, grandma, or anything else, anyone else. Now, I understand the frustration and the, and let's, let's lay it on the table. Number one, this is a situation that no one of us, whether it's a parent, a student, or any of the officials of the three towns, has ever had to face before. It was faced in 1918, and it was quite a different world in 1918. And it took the COVID, took that virus, which they called the Spanish Flu, over three years to work itself around. We're in the first six months to seven months of this. Would we like to give you a specific and say, okay, on January 2nd, when we come back to school, we are all going to come back in person? Well, you know what, we can't do that. Because we're, if if you ask Brooke, she will tell you that all of a sudden, on a Sunday night, she'll get calls saying that 14 people will not be showing up to work tomorrow because they've had to quarantine. And you know what? Any of your, any of the three towns cannot work that way with that kind of attendance or that kind of lack of attendance coming in and not knowing. We have a situation, a system that is working. It may not be working 100% perfectly right now, but it's working. We have a hybrid system in K through eight, which is not working. I personally would rather have full remote in all of the school system. The people that are teaching at the high school are teaching because we are requiring them to be in class. And the MOU went through that whole situation of the teachers are teaching from their own rooms because that creates a familiarity with those students that they are teaching. Is there a problem with labs? Is there a problem with athletics? Is there a problem with all of the clubs? Yes. But this is a situation that none of us, I don't care how old you are, you'd have to be well over 100 years old, has never faced before. And we're trying to do the best that we can. I understand that it's extremely frustrating for the parents because because they don't know what's coming down the pipe. But right now, everyone is safe, the students are safe, the students are learning, and we're going to try to keep this as small or keep the the disruption of their of their educational experience as small as possible. So that's, that's really what I have to say. Thank you.
Megan?
Yeah.
So.
Yes, oh, sorry, Jason, you are, so, since we have gone way off the agenda, this is actually, we've actually moved into your section.
Yeah, that's what I want to say. I've got about 15 questions, and I don't want to, you know, belabor points and lose everybody. So I understand that you've asked for public comment, and I want to respect that. But I do want to, I do want to work on behalf of Lancaster to get some questions answered.
Absolutely. And so the issue with the chat right now is that there is a lot going on with statements that are being made. And I'm trying to decipher them as questions so that we can pose them to the appropriate people. I understand there was a question about live streaming classrooms at the high school and whether or not that is an option. And, but I really do think that the bigger that the bigger questions that the parents are looking for, and what it seems like is they're looking for, is benchmarks and some kind of what what can happen. Steve, it seems like you've spoken to a survey that's going out to the parents, so that is a next step. And as that survey goes out, you have indicated that if, stop me if I'm wrong, if the, if the number of people who want to do that and go hybrid is high enough, that 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 is a model that you could move towards. Okay, so I have that straight.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brooke, I don't want to be speaking out of turn.
No, you know, you're absolutely right. But I I want to be clear, this, the, we still have guidelines that we have to meet from CDC, from the Department of Public Health, and from DESE, and those all play a role. And, you know, so we want to be conscientious of that, too. And I, can I just say something, Megan, too, back to Steve? I think Steve might have misspoke there. We think that our key to eight Remote Learning Academy is is working fine. I think that the Remote Learning Academy at the middle school, I think we still need to tweak that a little bit. So I think that there's still some work to be done, done in that area, for sure. Live streaming, you also had asked about live streaming, right? Okay, so did you want me to respond to that, too?
I would, just because it's come up a few times in the chat, and I would like that just addressed.
So live streaming is, it depends on who you talk to. I think, you know, if you talk to somebody like Leah, I think Leah would say that live streaming is definitely an option to consider. We've talked about it, we've talked, and we've looked into the dot cams. And in fact, I believe Dr. McGuire, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we bought a pile of dot cams so that our teachers can be using them now as they kind of gear up in case that this is, this is how we go. But you heard Steve Cullinan talk earlier about the fact that, in all probability, when we were looking at the hybrid plan to begin with, we were looking at third-party vendor. And that was one of the things that we wanted very much to avoid. We did not want to go to third-party vendor because we felt that our teachers were stronger, our curriculum was richer, and we just felt that our students should be taught by our teachers. And we knew that if we went to full remote, all teachers or all students at Neshober Regional High School would be taught by Neshober teachers. If we go to hybrid, then then we are going to have to, in all likelihood. I don't know whether live streaming or third-party vendor would be the way to go. But that's what's going to have to happen if we we go to hybrid, and we know that.
Okay. I'm gonna, because the three discussion items, and maybe even the last discussion item as well, are so intertwined, I'm going to turn this next section over to Jason Allison to talk about the current state of the NRHS learning approach, to answer, to ask your 15 questions. This is really your time to shine, so.
Thank you, Megan. So Jason Allison, Selectman Lancaster. Full disclosure, I have three kids who love Neshober Regional School District, two in the high school, and one in Mary Rollinson. But I am speaking as a selectman tonight. So I've heard from a number of parents, from a number of towns on both sides of of remote and hybrid discussion. But my goals for tonight are to first understand the process, you know, how we measure it, as well as how we're managing a path forward. And and first, I'd like to open with a thank you to all the caring district employees, committees, and residents. This type of dialogue, which may feel incredibly painful, it is, in my opinion, completely healthy and needed to help ensure we find the best path forward for our kids, so, so thank you. In addition, I'll apologize upfront, I'm going to try and facilitate, you know, really short and sweet answers. I don't mean to be curt, but I want to make sure I get specific answers that I need to understand my position on this as a board of selectmen member of Lancaster. So I also apologize if some of these feel a little bit repetitive. I did try to take notes as as folks were talking, but I I kind of want to really get to, get to the the nuts and bolts here of the process. So so that's kind of where this is going. So I'm going to direct all of these to to you, Superintendent Clunchey. Feel free to to direct those where you think they should go. Just in case, Superintendent Clunchey, you can hear me, okay?
Of course.
So what date did you start planning for this school year, and what date was the remote learning plan finalized?
Oh, that I don't know that I could nail down.
A month, a month would be fine.
Oh, we started planning for the new year, I would say, in in June. As Steve, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, I would say that was probably in the month of June when we started looking because that's when the commissioner started holding meetings to review guidance with us and tell us basically how we had to operate. We were initially told that about 90% of what we would do in the district would be prescribed at that time. So we were waiting for the DESE to come forward with their 90% of prescription. That did not happen. And so that left us in an awkward place around the end of June when we realized that we were probably going to be mostly on our own to figure this out.
Okay, so you started planning in in June of 2020, and when did you finalize the current plan?
Which plan, which plan are you talking?
The one we're using right now, the plan.
Brooke, it was August 10th. It was adopted at the August 10th meeting, the school committee voted to accept the the comprehensive plan.
Cool. So how did you decide on on the current plan for our learning model? And I don't want to talk about, I mean, I was here for the slides, I don't want to focus on challenges, adversity. Really want to focus on the key factors. So what I mean are, what were the deciding factors specifically for this path?
Steve, I'm going to look to you to help out, and Todd, too. I think in part, it was even things like our lunch hour. How could we, how could we possibly, which I don't think we're going to be able to do for a hybrid.
Sure.
Because at the, at the high school. That's just an example, right? You were asking what was some of the factors were. And that, because kids have to be separated by six to 10 feet, they can only face one way. They're not encouraged to socialize at all. And we could only fit, I believe, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, 50 desks in there, I think. And then we, a possible 20 outside for a total of 70. So then you have to think of how many lunch hours you have to go through and then work your schedule backwards from that.
Okay, so lunch hour was a tough one. And and what else was that, was it just lunch hour, or what else?
I think our our biggest issue when we were looking remote and hybrid was was the issue, the the middle schools were able to keep the students in one classroom and move teachers to them. In the high school, because we're so diverse, we had, if we had 15 students in a in a classroom, they were going to 15 different rooms and thus sitting with 15 other kids. And then those 15 kids would go somewhere else and sit with 15 other, we couldn't do the pod
Approach.
Okay, so you couldn't do the pod approach, okay. Because the 15 kids kind of intermingle between each different sets of.
Because we have, we we have specialized classes. So a kid is going from accelerated algebra to honors chemistry later on in the day. So so they're going, all these kids are going 30 different places at a time. And there was no way to keep a pod where we're just going to be able to keep kids in certain areas. That was one of our major concerns.
So scheduling is, scheduling was really complicated and almost impossible to do. And then we also took a look at the the size of the hallways and how we could move the traffic through the hallways and such. But I think really, one of the biggest things for us was just the the lack of, we felt, face-to-face teacher time in a hybrid versus the remote. And we felt that the remote would be a much stronger model. You know, and I think that we really felt strongly about the fact that we wanted our curriculum taught and not the curriculum of a third-party vendor. That was, that was a huge part of the decision as well. Todd?
I I just want to add that the feedback we got from surveys and feedback we got in the spring, it was a strong, strong desire from our community members and families for asynchronous learning and that two-way connection between teachers and students. And so we we worked really hard on making sure that that need was met, particularly with this remote model and knowing that teachers are interacting with their students every single day at the high school level because we saw that feedback loud and clear from what we, what we were really piecemealing together at the start of the pandemic in March and April, and really wanted to make that a priority. I also sat with a variety of assistant superintendents in the presentations for third-party platforms such as Edgenuity and Edgeseer. And we just felt that they they couldn't even touch what our high school teachers can do with their students. And we we saw that as strong feedback from our families in the surveys and what they really wanted moving forward and knew that with this particular schedule, we could, you know, at the very minimum, not getting them in there, we could offer that FaceTime and that that synchronous learning, that two-way communication that's real face-to-face between teacher and student, so.
You, there was a strong desire from from the families for this asynchronous learning. Do you, do you think that desire is the same as it was or increased? Or do you think families maybe feel differently now?
That's a great question. You know, I know that the high school's done some survey, surveys around that and have some survey data to show us around that. So, I mean, we haven't combed through that. I do think the synchronous piece is really, really important, and I think that we're still getting that for sure. But I do think that people are also wanting, you know, students to get back. You know, I'm a father of of two kids, too. I've got a a son who just went into middle school and a daughter who just went into ninth grade. And they've been full remote until the end of this month. So I I certainly empathize with that. I do appreciate the synchronous learning that they're getting, but also understand that, you know, there's a need and a desire to to want to get back.
Okay. About five here. So lunch hour, you know, the pod, pod approach was not reasonable, scheduling was complicated, lack of face-to-face teacher time, you know, we wanted our curriculum taught. And, you know, the feedback of families really wanted asynchronous learning. Any other, any other key deciding factors that that went into the decision for this approach?
Those are the main ones.
I think those are, I think we just felt we could offer a far better education remotely than we could hybrid. And I think we're incredibly sensitive to the fact that our job was to prepare those students for, you know, going on to college and university. And we felt that the best we could do would be remote. It was not the easiest. It was very, it was very complicated.
Absolutely. So I'm going to challenge that a little bit. So clearly, other schools do have a hybrid model. They have a lot of the same challenges, you know, whether it's pod issues or, I'm sure scheduling is complicated. I'm sure they want, you know, face-to-face time with teachers, just like you guys do. So, you know, when you, when you do look at other schools and you assess the ones that are currently in the hybrid model, you know, you know, how do you say that it's okay for us not to be, but it is also still okay for them to be in a hybrid model? So why does it work for others and not for us?
I would say it's not exactly working for others, based on, based on my conversations with other principals. They're, they're getting, they're getting all kinds of issues with with instructional time. So, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the trade-off. If you want the kids in a hybrid, they're there so that they can have some socialization with other students, which is, which is a good thing, but you're losing the instructional time. And that's, that's, I'm hearing that universally amongst the other principals in the in the district.
So why, why do you think they're doing it? Why, why are they continuing that model if they don't think it's working?
I think because they they believe that the the social aspect is more important than than the educational side of it. And I, and I don't say that the principals think that. Most of the principals I talked to would rather be in a remote model than in in the hybrid model because of the instructional time.
So is it fair to say that others? So is it fair to say that other schools are prioritizing the social aspects over the educational aspects? Well, we're prioritizing educational aspects over social aspects?
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak for other high schools, but I would say that we are definitely looking at the instructional side in a positive light. Yes.
So I want to challenge that a little bit. And with all due respect, I mean, you are speaking for other schools when you say that you're hearing things. So I'm just trying to, you know, piece that together to appreciate the value that we're getting versus, you know, when parents say, well, this other school can do it, right? Like, we have to, we have to measure that. We have to apply some, some criteria to say, well, why we're taking this path. And that's what I'm looking for help with. So that's what I'm trying to kind of group these together.
Again, I can't speak, alls I can tell you is what I hear from the other schools. I don't know what their thought processes are. I just know what my thought processes are.
Mr. Allison, do you mind if I jump in really quickly?
Absolutely.
Um, so my name is Leah Viverido. I'm a school committee member in Stowe, and I'm also a high school teacher in Hudson. And so I can speak kind of authoritatively on what another school is doing. And so what I hear in the chat, what I hear around town, what I hear in this conversation, the basic question is, what must be done to get us to in-person learning without sacrificing academics?
I'm not asking that.
I, but I, what I'm saying is that I think that that is at the heart of the problem, is that academics versus, you know, social emotional learning and being with their friends. So Hudson is doing a hybrid program that is not sacrificing academics, in my opinion. And the reason why I know that is because I meet with my students, every single one of my students, whether they be full remote, hybrid, or all in person because of their educational profile, every single day. And so there are towns who are live streaming right next door. And so I think that the question that I've been asking recently, I think this is kind of what a lot of parents want to know, is why can't Neshoba do that too? And so I know that this is a hard question. I feel like we are dodging it. Hudson is doing it, I know, because I just did it today. It is chaotic at times. It is far from perfect. The teachers feel slightly topsy-turvy because it is a very different paradigm. But it is seeking to balance academics with in-person learning hybrid system. And I can elaborate if you have any questions.
So I want, I want to convey that I'm incredibly grateful for, for sharing that. And it's, and it's important to get the authoritative view. And it sounds like what things in Hudson are working. I, part of my role here is to also be an advocate for the school and not to second guess them. So I'm trying not to do any of that tonight. What I really want to do is, is get a lot of information so that I can figure out, you know, where we are. My role, I see, is it is to coming back to the residents and saying, look, you know, this is a tough spot. The school's got this under control. They even still confidence in me. Or I need to go back to residents and say, man, you know, we got to figure this out, you know, there's just no path forward, any of those things. So I'm really not trying to make any decisions tonight or any judgments tonight. You know, I really just want to understand how we got to where we're at today. Because as everyone knows on the call, we've got 63% participants, you know, there's a lot of unhappy people. Some of them are on one side and some are on the other. So we really, I'm really just trying to focus on the process. And I'm incredibly grateful for, for what you're bringing. And I doubt, you know, I'm very sure that, you know, we'll be talking to you again. But I do want to kind of focus on the process and our measurements and kind of how we're going to go forward. So thank you very much, Leah. So just to jump back to the questions. All right. So we talked a little bit about the models that other school has. Leah did a really good job of explaining hybrid. You know, I think that, Steve, you brought up that, you know, some of the other schools aren't happy. And maybe they, you know, you're not, you know, willing to speculate on, on why, on kind of why that came out. But, but it sounds like maybe not everyone is happy with the models they're using. So Superintendent Clinchy, the next question is, so how do, how do you evaluate on an ongoing basis that the current model is the right one for kids? So I heard you say that, you know, that it may not be perfect. It's the best that you have right now. So how do you know that? You know, what, what barometers are you using to measure that it's, it is the right thing on an ongoing basis?
I don't know that that's, like, I'll start, but I'll look to Steve and Todd to offer anything else. You know, I think when we're looking for feedback, like we, the survey that we just completed, was it last week, Steve, I think, and we had 500 responses, you know, that gives us generally a really good pulse of what people are thinking. So, you know, we'll, we'll have another one. We're doing these surveys. And in fact, Steve, that wasn't your first survey. I think that was your second or third survey that you had done. We sent out a lot of surveys during the months of, I think, July and going into August. So we're constantly looking for, for feedback. The task forces that we had in play that we're looking at bringing back on stream, I think the high school task force, I think, is met again this week. You know, there are 30 folks on that, that they, they reach out as well. So I think we look at a myriad of ways of trying to get information. But not just that, I mean, we get a lot of emails, you know, we get a lot of emails a day that they're talking about just any range of ideas or beliefs or thinking or questions. And so that, a lot of that happens. So I think there's, there are a multitude of ways that we, we look to get information. Is that what you were looking for, Jason?
So what I, what I heard you say is surveys and basically feeling the pulse of parents via emails. Is that right?
Emails, our task force, you know, anytime we go out to have a, you know, a community meeting or whatever it is, I think that there's just, we tried to do a wide array of those types of things leading up to, you know, our first day back.
So how often, how, what's your frequency of surveying?
Steve, probably every two weeks, two to three weeks, maybe?
Yeah, something like that. We just had a survey last Friday. We're going to do another one in two or three weeks from, from there after we figure out what the numbers are from this survey. So we're trying to find out what people think.
I apologize for not knowing, but do you publish the results of those surveys online?
We're going to discuss it with the school committee.
At the next school committee meeting.
So you don't publish them for everyone to consume?
Ultimately, if it goes to the school committee, it's posted, Jason. It's posted on our website.
What? I guess I'm a little confused. So if you bring it to the school committee, then it gets posted? I guess my question is, do all surveys results get posted to the website?
Not necessarily. I think it just depends on, you know, like, for example, like, when, you know, when we did a number of surveys in the summer, we were looking for different things. And, you know, we were looking for comments, we were looking for different lines of thinking. We wouldn't necessarily publish all of that, no.
So I would, just as a, you know, someone outside looking in, I'd encourage you to, you know, guarantee to post all results. Because if you don't, you know, people are going to question, question, you know, choices there. Just, you know, just some advice there.
Thank you.
All right. Do you think the, the resolution of two to three weeks is, is, you know, enough? You know, is that too fast, too slow? Does it seem like you can respond in that sort of timeframe? Is it worth it?
Are the surveys worth it? Is that what you're asking?
The resolution. So you're surveying every two to three weeks. I'm guessing that you can't respond to changes every two to three weeks. So it seems like you're surveying, you know, the resolution is pretty fast.
Actually, we, we make a lot of changes based on survey results. And we do, we do it quickly. Pardon?
Can you give an example of one?
Um, Steve, you might be able to. I'm trying to think, I mean, when it was, when it was the school district, not the school, but Steve, you can think of one for the, this year, the high school. But for us, yes, it is, if we get something that tells us that we need to turn a different corner, we pull people in, we start brainstorming, and we start to plot a plan to go down a different roadway. So yeah, we, we pay, those surveys to us are like gold.
Jason, if I could just provide a, just a specific example, I know that over the summer, when we put our survey out and we asked and we put out three different hybrid models, and we asked for feedback on specifically what hybrid model would work best for you, we put that out to not only families, but we also put it out to faculty and staff. And that certainly informed us in terms of what model we definitely chose. That's just a tangible example that.
Yeah, that's a good example.
Survey example.
But there hasn't been one since the start of school, for example?
We're working right now on the, we had some comments about asynchronous, synchronous, and there's, we worked, we had a faculty meeting today with the faculty talking about what the standards were for asynchronous and synchronous learning. So we're taking action on the survey that we had last Friday, right now.
Okay, that, that's fantastic. I mean, again, as an outsider, that's an opportunity to instill confidence in, in the residents that, hey, you're hearing them. And here's the corrective actions that you guys are taking. So just, just some feedback there. All right. So I kind of, this is, this has been touched on. And I, and I, you know, I know this is a hard question, Superintendent Clinchy, but, but do you believe the level of education the students are getting remotely is equal to or better than the traditional in-person schooling?
Nothing is as good as a traditional school from my lens, nothing. We can't get back to that fast enough.
Okay. And this has been touched on a little bit, and I feel like I have a decent answer, but it kind of boils down to, I think, what a lot is going on in chat. So what is, what is the current plan for how our children will learn for the remainder of the school year? I mean, I think I heard that we don't have a plan for next steps because we can't, or we think we can't. So when do we start this process? When do we, are we waiting on something? Is it, you know, is it the guidelines are too strict? So kind of what is, what is the catalyst for, for change, for getting back to, you know, where we want to be?
My first reaction would be COVID-19 would be done and over with. We could just, in a millisecond, turn around and get everybody back into, into schools. I mean, in a perfect world, honestly, that's what we would do. I mean, I would love to get everybody back in before Christmas, you know. So I think, I don't think there's anybody that would, well, I don't know, maybe there are some people that would think though, I, I'm going to go back to your earlier question. I just don't think anything can truly replicate good, solid, effective teaching in a classroom with students and teacher in a classroom. I don't think there's anything that can replicate that. From our lens right now, we feel that the remote model that we're offering is as close as it can get. If, if parents in the next survey that go out suggest to us that they're willing to forego the, you know, the six-foot distance and go to the three to six-foot distance, for example, because lest we forget that that's the distance that the DESE has said is a safe distance, right? So if they're comfortable with that, then you heard Steve Collin say, we've got some, some hybrid models in our back pocket, ready to go. So if that is where the parents truly want to go, and that's the type of response that we see, then we'll do that. I still think that we will probably have, I could be wrong, but I doubt it. I bet you we will still have probably 30% of our student population, because that's about the number right now that wants to remain in full remote. And, you know, I saw some questions, you know, parents want choice. And I hear that. I absolutely hear that. So I think that that's going to, well, that always was in our plan anyway, Steve, when we talked hybrid, is that, you know, we have to look at students in full remote because parents, you know, and another comment in the chat, which I thought was spot on, I think parents definitely have changed their mind through the summer. And we even saw that even as we were doing surveys in, in July. And I remember saying to, to our staff, I bet you we're going to see a difference in this next survey than we saw two weeks ago. And you can literally see it. And I think a part, I think, you know, we also said as we started into the school year, and I think Leah, we had this conversation, or maybe it was Wayne, you know, I think that there's a certain amount of grieving or mourning because when you realize that we can't go back full, that was, that was not a good feeling. When we all realized that we couldn't pull off a full return, there's almost a sense of mourning.
So, so I think what I, if I'm reading, if I'm reading the tea leaves right here, is that there's going to be a survey that's going to come out, and it's going to include some semblance of, you know, hey, parents, are you willing to, you know, have a reduction in certain guidelines? Like, what will you be willing to give up to get to a hybrid model? And basically, you're surveying the parents to find out what their appetite is, you know, how much they're willing to give to get back to hybrid. Is that accurate?
I would say that that's very accurate. I mean, for example, too, I'm going to go back to the lunch situation, although that seems like it's something so small. But in that cafeteria at the high school, that cafeteria literally runs your scheduling, Steve, every year, because you have to work around how many people can sit in that cafeteria. So it's a huge driver for us. So, you know, one of the things that you're seeing is because there's so much that goes into the lunch hour, you're seeing a lot of schools go to school in the mornings and let the students leave around the 12 o'clock, 12:30 mark. And that's one of the models that we've also been looking at for hybrid.
So can you give a timeframe on when that survey will come out?
I think we said two to three weeks, I believe is what we said.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
I think, yeah, I think we said that a couple of times.
Okay. So, so in theory, the, the survey, that specific survey comes out in about two to three weeks, you analyze the results, that takes some weeks. So if I'm speculating right now, am I in the ballpark that, you know, maybe six weeks from now, the results of that survey will be out and there'll be conversation around the results and next steps?
Right. I think that that's fair and reasonable.
Okay. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not putting you on a date. I'm just.
No, I'm, and I'm not sensing that you are at all. And thank you for saying that. I'm not sensing that at all. And we can only do what we can do too, you know. So, and, and I guess one of the reasons, and I know that we said this a lot when we were planning during the summer and, you know, May, June, July, August, that's where we stand tonight, tonight. Because I believe Steve brought up, and he's absolutely right. I mean, if, he gave the example about a Sunday night type thing. And he's absolutely right, because sometimes I'll get a phone call from our nurse leader that will tell me how many people are in a certain building, for example, are being tested because of X event. If we have a cluster, like, if I have a cluster next week in a school and have to shut that whole school down, that, that puts us in a whole different venue. So we want to be really clear on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, everyone's dealing with that and, you know, across. And, and based on this conversation here and kind of how things have been going, I think I would feel comfortable going back to Lancaster and saying something like, you know, you know, around six weeks, you know, we should have an idea of what next steps are pending, you know, no new, who knows what, you know, fingers crossed, that sort of thing. Okay, thank you. So that question's answered. Okay, so your process for actually making, for having these internal discussions, I'm assuming that currently you meet, you know, in closed-door sessions, you know, is there any level of transparency that exists in your planning and scheduling? And would you be open, you know, you know, would you be willing to have some level of open sessions so that family can listen in, albeit not participate? You know, that, you know, that goes to a lot of the transparency conversation. You know, so kind of can you describe your process for meeting internally? And then would you be open to exposing that at some level for, for parents to, to listen in on?
I think we would have to go back and think of what that looks like, Jason. I don't know that I've got an instant answer on that. I would say, though, like, we had a number of parents on our task forces. And you heard Kathy talk about that she, about that she said on the, the high school task force. So we had a lot of parents on, I had several parents on our task force at the district level. So those, those parents can, are, like, they can always go out and talk about what we've done in those meetings, you know. Or, or sometimes we even ask them, can you go out and get the pulse on this or get the pulse on that and bring it back to us? So I don't think it's ever been like closed-door, like, secret meetings. I don't think Todd and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've ever taken that type of approach that it's, it's all secret. That just isn't our style.
So, so it sounds like then you would be willing to having some level of openness? Because I guess it feels like it is like that today.
It is like what, today? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. What I heard you say is, is you feel like it's open today. So if it is, if it does feel like it's open, then you would be willing to have parents listen in or something like that, something?
I think, I want to go back and say, I don't know what that venue would look like. I believe that's what I said. And I don't, that's what I'm saying. I'd have to go back. We'd have to have some discussion on that, because I don't really know what that looks like. But, but again, I'm going to repeat, we did have parents involved in all of our task forces. So it wasn't that we were hiding anything. All that discussion happened with parents sitting in the room.
So have you had conversations or would you be willing to have a conversation around a third-party consultant playing an assistant role in helping to make? a third-party consultant, uh, playing an assistant role in, in helping to make these plans?
I don't, I don't think we would be adverse to it. I just don't think it would be necessary.
So I, I think I read, uh, that Wachusett, um, had a third-party consultant come in and, and that's, you know, that's where that question's coming from.
Yeah, as soon as you asked a question, I thought, I bet you you're thinking Wachusett. Yeah.
Everybody reads the item. So, you know, is that something that, you know, have you, have you considered it? Have you, you know, uh, ruled it out for any specific reasons? Or is that something that you think could help, you know, maybe bridge a little of the unhappiness with the residents to have a third-party come in?
I think we could take that under consideration, but I, I worry that it's, I'd be curious to see how it helps Wachusett and if it's worth the money. I, I worry about the money that would be spent on that, when I think that we have the expertise sitting in that building.
Okay.
The high school. Steve, you had a number of teachers on that, the task force as well, right? That, that helped to map out the plan that you, you're on right now.
Yep, teachers, parents, students.
Okay. So next question, so, so with remote learning, which I, I would characterize as it started last school year, um, are you considering any cost-cutting measures? And if so, which ones?
I'm not sure quite where to go with that, um, because I'm not sure.
Maybe, maybe I can frame it this way. So I think we've all agreed that this model is not as good, um, as, as the model we would want. And, you know, towns pay for a certain level of education and if the towns are not getting it, you know, is that something you guys have discussed as, you know, a conversation about, you know, if, if teachers are not in the building or if, you know, you don't have to buy as many, you know, certain levels of supplies because students aren't there? Are there, has there been any conversations around cost-cutting measures based on the fact that, you know, everyone agrees that this level of, of, um, of schooling that the kids are getting is not as good as it has been in the past? Or not as good as a, in, in mod, in?
In person, a full return.
In person, yes, thank you.
So cost-cutting measures, I, I don't know that there's any many cost-cutting measures that we could play. And I know Pat Maroney's on this phone call here that, that you could think of, um, because the, the bottom line is there are other strange costs that come into play with all of this. And I think Steve Rubenstein alluded to this, um, earlier too. So for example, one of, a major problem that we are having right now, um, that isn't felt quite as much with the full remote, but it certainly will be with the hybrid that we are experiencing right now with our elementary and middle, is the number of staff that are out for 14 days at a time. And sometimes they will be out for 14 days and come back in and will have to go back out for another 14 days. And, um, so, and those, those classes all have to be covered. And so it's not like maybe a year or two ago where somebody would get the 24-hour flu and could be, you know, back on, you know, back to work two or three days later. These are all minimum of 14 days. And one of the concerns that you will hear superintendent's voice across the state is, will we find ourselves in a position where we don't have enough people to man the buildings? So what you're going to see, and there were some, just some changes made to the, is it FCCRA, um, PAC? It is that intermittent leave, um, is now being, um, more encouraged in some ways. And so what that means is that you will have teachers be able to leave, for example, on a Monday, Tuesday, um, come in for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, go out the next Monday or Tuesday. So all, all of that comes with a cost. So, um, you know, there's, I don't see any areas other than letting go of staff right now for cost-cutting measures. Our buses is another example, um, although we're not busing our high school kids in right now, um, are busing because of the CDC and the DESE guidelines, for example, in a 77-passenger bus is 26 students. Well, we run a run of 77 kids or 75 kids and now we can only put 26 kids on that. That means we have to triple our number of runs. And that's another thing that we know we're going to be up against as soon as we go to hybrid at the high school, is it's going to be a completely different arrival and dismissal time and process, and again, probably staggered times. It isn't going to be anything like normal. And I think that that's critical. So you're, uh, you're having to run more bus runs than you would ever have in a regular school year.
So let's, let's go, go a little deep in one of those. You talked about quarantining. So what is the average number of high school teacher sick days year over year compared to the number of sick days that have had, have been taken this year?
Um, Henry is not here, so I don't know that I could give you, um, data points on that.
Yes.
But I would, I would tell you that it, it's problematic for us. And, and coupled with that is also the fact that there are not a lot of substitute, we are, uh, across the state, we always have problems with, uh, teachers for substitute teaching anyway. But right now, because of COVID, a lot of substitute teachers do not want to come into the buildings. So our general pool of substitute teachers is definitely minimal right now. We're like, I just feel like we can barely run at times with the number of staff that we have in our buildings.
Sure. But I, I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand the point you're making is, is that you're, you're supposing that, you know, due to quarantining, you know, this number of sick days for teachers taken this year is going to be, you know, drastically higher than, than previous years. Is that right?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I got, I got distracted by the, the chat question that went in there.
Sure. So, so you're supposing that, that the number of sick days that teacher, that teachers are taking this year is, is dramatically higher than sick days previous year over years?
Oh, yeah. Right, right now, no, I would say if, if we're one teacher, I mean, I'm just thinking of one teacher in general, who I think barely took any sick time last year and I think has had, oh, probably 20 days already. So, yeah, it, it, yes, we're, we're definitely seeing that.
Okay. So, you know, what do you say to parents who are paying a high tax rate for a certain level of education and not getting that level of education now?
I think I would turn that around, Jason, and say then, tell me what a better route is, because the best education is full return, no precautions. Right? And, and I, I also want to put out there that I've got many emails in from parents who want that, full return, no precautions, no masks, no nothing. So, you know, we, we certainly have parents out there that want that. Now, in a, in a perfect world, that's where we would be. But this right now is, I believe, the best that we can do. I feel very comfortable with the, um, middle and elementary school being a hybrid model, because I think that they're getting the best that they can get in terms of being, because we, we were, again, I want to go back to that just for half a minute, we were very concerned that we would be out, um, again, in full remote, let's say November 15th, November 30th, somewhere around there. And at least our youngest children would have met their teachers before, because when we went out in March, they already knew their teachers. They, there, there was a relationship already there. Going into a brand-new school year, that wasn't there. And so we really wanted to make sure that our children met their teachers. And so, um, I think that we're doing the absolute best that we can. I think our teachers at the high school are doing a great job right now with their, uh, remote. It was something that they felt excited about and I certainly supported, um, the, the approach that they brought forward. And I think that they're doing the very best that they can. So I think everybody, and it goes back to Steve Rubenstein, everybody's doing the absolute very best that they can do right now.
Okay.
And I think that's all we can do.
So we're doing the best that we can and that's all that we can do right now?
That's what I think, yes.
So.
Jason, I, I'm sorry, I know you have a lot of questions. I'm just trying to figure out where we're at. I do want to just make one comment, um, as I've just spoken, um, with Denise and, um, Dawn, the, um, the chat is going to, so what we, we are going to do is this chat is saved, um, it's a public record, um, and it is going to be posted, um, on the Stowe page. Bolton's agreed to post it on their page. We're also going to forward it to the school district if, if there are questions that we have not been able to get to, um, and ask for a response on some of those as well. Okay?
I have three questions left.
Okay, that's great, thanks.
Uh, so, uh, so Superintendent Clinchy, so, so what do you believe constitutes a successful year from a learning perspective?
Wow, that's a, that's a, that's a deep question, actually. Oh, my goodness. I don't think that, when I think of a successful year, I don't think of it in just educational academic terms. I think of a successful year for a student, and I'll talk high school, is something that's well-rounded, something that includes a strong SEL component, that, that, um, that child is taken care of, that that child feels welcome in the building, um, that they can talk to people at lunchtime, they can communicate, they can play sports if they want, they can play chess if they want, they can do whatever. I, I think you're looking at, when I think of a successful year for a student, I think it's well-rounded. I don't think just academics.
And, and maybe I asked that wrong, when I, when I mean a successful school year this year.
Oh, this year?
Yes.
Well, I think at the high school, one of the things that, you know, for us, uh, you heard Steve Coloney talk about the fact that we're looking at bringing students back in, um, in, in groups and that kind of thing, we're doing it that, he's doing a really nice job with that, the staff are doing a good job with that. I think in terms of the academics, um, I feel that they're getting a strong academic background with, from the teachers. And I think that the teachers are doing a really good job in the remote learning, uh, component, so I feel good about that. Um, I think that the, you've got teachers that are accessible to students all day, um, and so they have that type of access to them. So, and I think that there are different ways that students can connect with each other, so, but is this very different than any other year? Oh, my gosh, yes, it is.
So, so I'll touch on one of those points, which is teachers are, you said teachers are doing well from an academic standpoint. How, how do you measure that? How do you know that to be true?
Well, I think, I, I think that's, again, that's a multi-pronged question. I don't think that there's a single answer for that either. You know, you're looking at, you could, for example, you can look at the Google Meet, you can go in, you can see what's going on between teacher and student. There's, there's, there's a myriad of ways that you can look at that.
Yeah, the reason I asked the question is I think, you know, if we're able to explain to the parents that this is how we're, you know, evaluating that the students are doing well, you know, that may instill some confidence in them that, hey, you know, the students are getting things out of it. So.
So for, for that kind of thing, though, I think that you can look at things, whether it's grades, whether it's, um, end product, whether it's the amount of engagement, um, you know, when, when I walk the halls right now from the Showbridge High School and I hear the teaching that's going on, it's, it's exciting. I think that those teachers are doing a really good job inside of those classrooms right now.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the, the flip side of that, which is, you know, what do you believe would constitute an unsuccessful school year this year?
Like, gee, that's so multifaceted.
But this goes to how you're making all your decisions, right? Like, this is your, your mental approach for how you're approaching, you know, coming up with these models. So that's why they are incredibly subjective questions. We want to understand how you're approaching these situations.
Yeah. I think an unsuccessful year is when you just, you're, you're not wanting to be engaged, you're not at all, I'm talking from a student's perspective, when you're not wanting to become engaged in anything or any academics or any extras that are being offered or, you know, you're not feeling good about things, um, you feel like you've got nowhere to turn. Um, I think tho, those are, those are things that I worry about a lot.
So, so what are you doing to help ensure that those, that students are not, are not having those situations where they're, where they're not wanting to be engaged and where they've got nowhere to turn?
So that's really one of the reasons why we went after the student support center that Steve spoke about earlier. And, uh, Steve, you can certainly, um, jump in on this, I'll just start it, I'll tee it up and then you can finish it up. But, uh, you know, one of the things that we were concerned about in June is because we saw a number of students that were not engaging, that we felt should have been engaging. And so, um, our guidance department reached out to a number of those students and then the idea came along about can we create a student support center? And, um, so I went over and sat down with them, they mapped out the idea, we brought over our facilities director and then we created this student support center, uh, which is the first room on the right-hand side now when you walk in the high school. And, um, it, it's, it's really intended to be a center where students can come and get whatever supports they need. Steve, do you want to kind of rip off of that?
Sure, yeah. We're, we're looking, the students that aren't on IEPs, uh, some of them are having difficulties. Our guidance, our teachers letting our guidance counselors know, uh, students that might not be participating as much as, as we would hope that they would participate, we're reaching out to them, we're trying to bring them into this student support center to get them to some, some additional support in, in that room. Um, it's just, I mean, it's, it's only been 20 days, so we're still, we're still working towards getting, making that work. But that's our goal.
That sounds great.
But every time I've, every time I've been in there, Steve, there have been kids in that room.
Yep. Oh, I've probably had 10, 10, 10 or 15 kids that have been in there since the beginning of the year.
Does that include reaching out to the parents or just the students?
Oh, we reach out to the students. For, high school's a little bit different in that we, we try to work through the, the students, because they, they need to start looking out for themselves a little bit more. But the guidance counselors are in touch with parents as well. I mean, we, we, we try to work with parents and students to make things happen.
Thank you. Last question, eh, you know, would you be open to having follow-up meetings, you know, specific to measuring the success of this year and the learning plans?
Can you say the first little bit again?
Would you be open to having follow-up meetings, specific to measuring the success of these learning plans?
I think we're always open to that, because we, we always do that. I, I'm not sure what type of meetings you're talking about, but internally, we always do that.
Uh, I'm talking about externally, you know, with, with parents. Again, I think that someone used the analogy, uh, kettle, kettle getting ready to, to explode. We, we've got to figure that out, because it is exponentially increasing of, you know, the unhappiness right now. And we, we just have to figure out a way, and that's not about making change per se, it means about, you know, hearing people and reaching them and, and working with them. So I, I just want to, I want to make sure that there's an open dialogue and that you guys are open to, you know, maybe over-communication, maybe, you know, too many meetings, you know, whatever, something, something, whatever, whatever it takes to get us to a better spot.
Can I just respond to a chat, a question, Megan, while, um, and Jason, I thought that you weren't asking anything else per se, I just want to respond to that. This is not, the student support center is not just for students on IEPs, that I just saw that question come up. That's not at all the intent. The intent was always to have it open. And I, I think back, Steve, to a parent that you were talking to earlier this year and you said that you were concerned about the, the student and suggested that the student come into that student support center. And that wasn't a student on IEP, so no.
It's, it's specifically not for students on IEPs. The students on IEPs have plans and we've got, we've got other stuff going on for them. This is for, more for students on, on a 504 plan or just a regular ed student that's, that's having struggles. It, it's not, yeah, it's not special at all.
Jason, I heard, I, I, and I did hear what you said.
Okay. So I just want to say thank you very much for your patience with me and, and the questions. I know it's a lot, we're already past nine o'clock. And I would also like to say thank you to Leah. You know, it sounds like things in, in Hudson are going well and I'm, you know, interested in hearing more about that. It sounds like, you know, we can learn a lot more from you. So thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Um, so, Stan, I think that Jason started to touch on, um, communication and at the, sort of towards the end. And so, um, you have the floor for this agenda item, if you'd like to chat on it.
Well, thank you very much. I'll, I'll try to make it quick, uh, because, uh, this sun is going to be ongoing and obviously we have one more item after this. But I think a common thread that we, that I have heard from parents is, is that there isn't the kind of communication that's, that they expect from the district and the school committee. Uh, the, the, the folks that I'm, been reaching out to and have reached out to me said, you know, they, they've been asking questions, they're not getting the answers. So I think there needs to be some, some better mechanism of, of communication.
Do you have some suggestions, Stan? Do you have some suggestions?
Well, well, the, the community, the communication needs to come from the district and, and the school, school committee. And I'm also going to say from the town's perspective, you know, you have to understand, you know, you have to look at this from the perspective of the towns are your customer. I don't know, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's probably very close. You know, in Bolton currently, 63% of every, everyone's tax dollar goes to the schools. We're forking over a lot of our money to fund the district and we're not getting answers. The, the town, the officials in the town don't have any communication with, really with the district and don't have any communication with, with the school committee. and don't have any communication with, with the school committee. And it should not be that we need to ask you what the information is. You should be providing the information to us, and that's been lacking for quite some time. And I think we need to try to figure out how we can make that a bit better. I mean, one perfect example from, from, from the parents, one parent asked for a public records request, and what she got back was something from your law firm, the, the district's law firm. I've never seen that. I mean, these were not, you know, difficult questions to answer. But now you've spent money to have your attorney respond to a parent with, with questions, asking questions about what's going on. I think there needs to be a much better set of communications back and forth. My understanding is, is that when a, a parent goes to the Nisho Regional School District website and says, you know, fill it, contact the, some rep, that all those questions go to the chairman, that they don't go to the individual school district rep that's been voted by the townspeople. And what I did was, is I provided email addresses for our three reps to a group of parents. You know, that, that shouldn't be. I mean, we didn't elect Kathy Cody in, in Bolton. We elected our reps, and we should be able to be talking to our reps to bring our concerns and our questions to them. They shouldn't be going to Kathy. And also, I, I think, you know, we've had a meeting tonight, and, and due to the, the size, you know, we're doing chat and whatnot. But the school committee meetings, I wanted to participate in one a week or two ago, and I was surprised to learn that. All I could do was watch them via YouTube. I couldn't ask a question. I couldn't participate. There was no nothing. They have, you know, 15 minutes at the beginning. You have got to email your questions in. That's not, in my mind, a good mechanism, especially in these times where parents have a lot of concerns. I think that has to change. And we've talked about a lot of ser-, you know, surveys here, surveys there. We've talked about all kinds of surveys. You've admitted some are public and some are not. And I'm going to, I'm going to put something out there, and it's going to be very difficult, it's going to be very uncomfortable with Kathy. But at the April 8th, 2020, school committee meeting, at the, at the four hours and four minutes into that meeting, when they were talking about doing a survey, Kathy Codyan made the statement about that survey. We'll ask the teachers and the parents, and then we'll disregard everyone's votes and make the decision ourselves. And I listened to that half a dozen times. Now, maybe she was joking. But after, I'm not sure that she's joking because the parents aren't getting the information that they need. And I think we need to have a much better mechanism of communication between the school committee, the district, and disseminating of information out to the parents. I, I think, I think a lot of this could have been avoided if we had better communication on the outset as opposed to whatever was going on. And I've gotten into this a little bit late, but I've been frustrated myself as a selectman for some time now with the, the lack of communication, the lack of, we use this word transparency, and that word was used a few years ago with someone else who's on the board. There needs to be more transparency. And I think we'll all move together a lot better if we have this transparency and there's better communication amongst everybody. So that's all I have to say about that right now. Maybe more to come.
If, if I could add a little something to that, my impression from listening tonight is that the school district doesn't know what to do with input it gets from parents unless it's in the form of a survey, unless it's very structured, unless it happens at a time of the school district's choosing. And that's not going to foster good relationships in the community.
Kathy, you've had your hand up for a little while.
Thanks. And I got kicked out a little bit, and I appreciate the, the honest and frank comments. And Stan, I'm not offended. I made a mistake. I made a joke. And I spoke up at the subsequent meeting about it and responded to some emails. There's a lot of perceptions that I've heard you express that aren't accurate. It's a quarter past nine. I agree about communication, and it's a two-way street. And someone talked about the, you know, getting to the, to the boiling point. So I guess I'm curious as to if this has been an ongoing concern and you feel we have been remiss, why haven't you reached out to any of us to say, look, um, we got some concerns about communication? Because, you know, I, I spend a lot of time communicating with people, getting back to people. We have done any number of things. I know that there are a lot of people that don't agree with us, and that's fine. We respond, but we don't always, we can't always give people what they want. It's, it's, it's a part of the job. But I, I would say, yeah, commu-, com- ongoing evaluation of the things that we do to include, um, communication. So I guess that's my question to you and Bob. If this has been building, if this has been a problem, and you think that, that we have not been responsive or responsible, why has it taken this point to do it? Why not reach out and say, I want you to be aware of something? The, the example you gave, Stan, we have a protocol that, 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 and, and we run our, our school committees are run very differently for a lot of reasons. Well, we have protocols for the way we do business. There are 11 people on our committee. If, if, if a, an email is sent to NRSC, the chair responds on behalf of the committee. And there are times when somebody will get, a member will get something from a constituent and will send it to me as an FYI, and will just say to somebody, um, I'm forwarding this to the chair. They can respond. There's no stronghold I have on communication, but I do want to know how we can do better. So I'm, I, I think that this idea of communication, maybe it's time for the, the quote-unquote principals, the select board chairs, the town managers, the town administrators, and the superintendent to sit down and, and look at both sides. But I want to put that question back to you, Bob and Stan. Why have you waited so long if this has been an ongoing problem and you've experienced this frustration? If, if people are going to you and you don't think we're listening to them, um, I mean, I easily put eight to 10 hours a week into the role I play as school committee chair and, and presentations and reaching out to you and communicating. So there's something I'm, I'm missing. So I, I'm saying it would have been really helpful to know before tonight. But if tonight's a starting point, then let's set up a preliminary meeting with, as I said, the principals from these boards and start from there.
Well, I, I would, I would like to go there.
No, let, let me, let me respond. We've had this, we've had this conversation before, Kathy. We've had this conversation before. And the withholding of information and the, 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 trying to hide stuff. Let's go back and, and let's talk about the, the vandalism at the high school that wasn't reported to the town. Let's go back and talk about the fires that were at the high school that weren't reported to the town, nor to the police, nor to the fire department. We've had this, we've had this conversation before, Kathy. Please. We have had this conversation before.
Stan, I'm picking you. But you're not communicating. You're talking at us.
The parent.
So why not, why don't we sit down and have a summit, a communication summit?
I would love to have that. And let's have the parents involved because they're the, they're also the ones who are telling us that, that you're not communicating with them either. So let's, let's do that. I would be more than happy to do that, Kathy.
Well, I think I might would be in favor of, since you, you said the school committee is, um, remiss in its communication with the town boards. I think that's a good starting point. And, um, you know, you, but you didn't answer my question, and we didn't have the conversation. There was, a conversation is, is two-way, and I don't want to get into the weeds on that. But if we need to have an open, frank conversation because there's, there's clearly frustration and anger that I'm feeling from, from you folks, um, it needs to be, be addressed as far as I'm concerned. And so instead of taking the time tonight, I would want to stop.
All right, guys. Sorry. I'm, we're going to push pause on this. This is, we're going, I, yes, I just muted everyone. We're going to, we have a, we're at 9:20. I understand that, I feel like tempers are getting really high right now, and we're getting into that line of being unproductive. So I think some of these conversations are very personal, and they're not, we're not talking about the, the community as a whole, and we're getting into the weeds. So I'm going to respectfully ask that we move on to the last agenda item at this point. And maybe we get another tri-town meeting next month on the agenda so we can talk about these things. Okay. You're going to have to unmute yourself if you want to talk. Jason, did you, or who is next? So Denise, I'm going to ask you to speak to, um, the last, um, agenda item Ellen had wanted to speak to. And that was one that has been touched on throughout this evening, and it is about funding and CARES Act money and what money is going to be asked from the various towns.
So I will speak, and thank you for turning it over to me for the moment. So I will basically speak on behalf of the three communities. Dawn is still on this meeting, and feel free to chime in. We feel, so first of all, there's some information that we're looking for as the municipalities regarding COVID funding, CARES Act, whatever you want to call it, money that was allocated to the school department for COVID relief. We've gotten, we've also sort of gotten a basic request of is there money available? Will there be money given to the school districts? We feel we need some answers before we can respond to that, first of all. And secondly, you know, we have our priority list as well in the municipalities that we need to take care of. We have employees we need to keep safe. We have residents we need to deal with. We have infrastructure we need to maintain. So we're still all addressing those items on our own. But we feel that there's some misconceptions about what was granted or allocated to the schools. I had a conversation with Superintendent, and she mentioned what was granted. But then we were told there was a public request for information, and the response was there was no money allocated to the schools. We think there should be more transparency into what was, or how that money's been spent thus far. Quite frankly, I have some concern if it's all being done with this remote learning program, and we're bringing in all these additional teachers, and that's why we can't bring students back to the high school because now you can't make the infrastructure upgrades with the money that was allocated. So I think there needs to be a much bigger conversation regarding this before, quite frankly. I am ready to say, yes, we can dedicate this kind of funding to you. And Dawn, feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything. But we've talked as the municipalities about this, and again, we're not saying it's, it's off the table, but I think we need to, I, I have some better communication and understanding as to what the money is needed for, how much is needed. Will there be additional requests in the future for additional funding and so on?
Yeah, I, I agree with what Denise said. I mean, obviously, we're focusing on as much as possible trying to keep our respective employees safe and the public safe. We are, in Bolton, we are open to the public, and we're doing, I'm doing everything I can to maintain a safe environment. But that being said, if there's, if I were to have funds left over, you know, or if I had funds that may or may not need to be expended in a certain manner or for a certain priority, and I understood what the school district was looking for and what the funds would be looked at, at, at least I could consider prioritizations. But last Thursday, we submitted an email to the school district asking what had been spent for funds up to that point, what you anticipated for returns, what, what you planned on spending the money on. And, um, one week later, my email hasn't been acknowledged. So I have no understanding at all as to what the school district needs are, so I can't possibly prioritize over what, over what we're looking at.
Dawn, who did you send that email to?
Nanachka sent it to Pat and copied me.
Oh, okay.
And I did just send just today, though, an email, both to Brooke, you and Pat.
Yeah, I saw that.
With some questions that, you know, I think a couple of them came up this evening. But, you know, I feel there should be some recognized savings on some items like busing and transportation. You know, are extracurricular stipends still being given out? Are there savings on that? And because we're not having all of these extracurricular activities going on current-